I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the Oakland Board of Education. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 entitled the Open Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided by mailing a notice of the time, date, location, and, to the extent known, agenda of this meeting to the Courier-Post in retrospect on April 2, 2025. Copies of the notice have also been posted in the board office located at 100 Lees Avenue and the school and filed with the Borough Clerk. We'll call for attendance.
Mr. DeMarco?
Here.
Mrs. Vappel?
Here.
Mrs. Love?
Here.
Mrs. Marmian?
Here.
Mr. McMillan is away. Mrs. Rotondo?
Here.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Stouts?
Here.
Mr. Tebby?
Here.
Please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to flip Items 1 and 2, or 2 and 3, rather, so we can see the budget presentation, get the details, and then we'll go into our public comment section. That way, everybody has the information handy. So moving on to committee the whole, do I have a motion?
Sir, move.
Second. Move then second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I leave it on because I never remember to turn it.
Thank you so much for attending the 2526 School Budget Public Hearing. Our theme moving into this upcoming school year is supporting our continued growth. The vision and mission is the same, and so our goal is to make sure that we appropriately prepare our students for a just world and that it is inspiring and empowering to the young people of our community. And so, as we shared in our last special meeting, we want to make sure that we are still positioned to continue with our growth. And so, coming back from the pandemic, districts and our contemporaries were struggling in order to be able to maintain degrees of proficiency. And so, the bulk of our time for the last three years has been heavily focused on growth, making sure that we're not losing ground, but that we're also moving young people at the different bands of performance. And so, at any given time in any given classroom, there are going to be four, sometimes five, categories of performance, and our school is going through every single month and marking period focused on moving every child up one band of performance until we reach proficiency. And so, what we have seen is that we have not lost ground over the last three years and want to maintain that, but what you don't see is the growth from students that were below basic. They have now gone up two and sometimes three bands of performance. Students that were almost proficient are now proficient, and so we want to continue with this trajectory until we reach our goal, which is 100%. We also want to bring positive attention to one of the other goals of our school, which is positive student behavior. And so, making sure there is high levels of student engagement, making sure that we're tracking attendance, and making sure that we are incentivizing and making it fun and engaging and a welcoming place for students to want to come. And what we have shown over the last three years is a 3.9% decline in chronic absenteeism. What that means is, is that more students are coming more days of school, and they're benefiting from our teachers. And so, we also want to make sure that we are appropriately framing the current landscape. And so, we would categorize 2025 as a time of chaos and uncertainty. We have an escalating mental health crisis. Young people are demanding more and more services in order to be regulated within the school context. Growing teacher shortage. Very fortunately, we've had an extremely low turnover rate here in Oakland. However, as the years continue to progress, those who started off as doughy-eyed young teachers are not so young, and we're going to start to see retirements over a period of time. And so, we want to make sure that we're able to backfill those positions to maintain a continuity of services. Rising costs of goods and services. You will hear about this throughout the presentation. Inflationary costs are driving extremely tough decisions within our school district and districts like ours. Local budget, the impact on taxpayers. This is affecting districts across the state and across the country. The potential elimination of the United States Department of Education, as well as federal programs and services. And so, in our district, programs and services that are not yet determined for the upcoming year are going to be our Title I services, our IDEA services. And so, we are waiting with bated breath in order to make sure that we're able to sustain the services that we're currently providing to our students, but being able to have a plan in the event we start to see decreases in federal funding, like many districts are currently experiencing. And to make sure that you understand that this is not some long, far-off piece, our sister district in Collingswood, we received a notification on Friday, the cancellation of a mental health grant in Collingswood that supports social workers. It was a five-year grant, and they're canceling it after one year because the statement was that it no longer aligns with the new goals and objectives of the new administration. In addition to potential reductions in K-12 funding that affects the state and then ultimately trickles down to local municipalities. And so, what has been done in Oakland to be able to address some of these challenges? And so, over the last year, year and a half, we have been very fortunate to have community members, as well as board leaders, that have gone to bat and helped us advocate for additional resources, as well as funding flexibility, and we're continually pushing for an outright revision of the school funding formula. The current funding formula disproportionately hurts South Jersey school districts, and so we're pushing for change. The New Jersey Policy Perspective published a technical report that was presented to the legislature, seeking to identify specific areas where we need to improve school funding. The New Jersey Fair Funding Collective, which was created for Camden County, its concerned community members, there are board members on this dais that are participating in that fair funding collective. This is continued advocacy locally, pushing for state-level change. The public hearings, we had board members go both to Trenton as well as Blackwood to testify on the negative impact on local communities with the current funding formula. And as a result of the continued advocacy, we were provided a one-time opportunity for the tax levy incentive program. And so, what is this program? The program is a one-time exception to the 2% tax cap law, established in 2008, refined in 2009. It has ultimately impacted districts like Oakland more severe since about 2013. And so, what this means is, is that the funding that's available to be raised is inconsistent with the rising costs of expenses. It's a one-time opportunity to raise local tax levy and reduce budget deficits and potential funding shortfalls, and then as an incentive from the state, they will provide one-time additional funds, 5% of whatever the value of what is raised at the local level. And so, why is Oakland eligible for this program? The state has determined that Oakland is underfunded locally and has a budget that is below educational adequacy. And so, what does that mean? The state determines there's a dollar amount needed to provide a thorough and efficient public education to students. And so, the problem with this formula is the state's definition of what is thorough and efficient is not consistent with what our community believes is thorough and efficient for its children. And so, things that are not included in a thorough and efficient education are extracurricular activities, targeted student level of support, after-school programmings, additional technology needed to support students, building maintenance. And so, the state expects for us to pay for all of these things, but they don't include that in the development of their formula, which then shifts that burden back onto local residents and taxpayers. And so, I'm going to turn it over to our business administrator. She's going to talk about the numbers, and then I will wrap up.
So, this is a three-year comparison of our enrollment in Oakland. So, we have about 14 children estimated for next school year. So, what I do is when I count the children in October, I submit the enrollments in October, and that informs the state funding formula because it's supposed to be based on the number of children. And then Trenton has a five-year weighted average scale on the trends for each district. So, they are projecting Oakland up slightly, so I've obviously increased the numbers accordingly. So, about 14 additional children for Oakland for next year. So, this line is a little different than prior years for those of you that have been following. Trenton has requested, because we are changing the budget tonight, the public hearing for the tax levy incentive aid program, that I break out specifically the state aid that we're receiving for the tax levy incentive aid program. And that's also why the resolution is so long. The one item is like three pages long. That was actually directed by Trenton. They wanted a line item accounting of where the funds are going and where the revenue is being placed. So, in preparation of the 2526 school year, we had 399,000 of surplus, and surplus just is basically unspent funds from the year before, after it's been audited and certified, that is, funds available. So, what the law says, if we have excess funds, then I have to use it as revenue in the next coming school year. So, that was 399,000, and that is down from the year before. Local tax levy on the table tonight, 6,880,000. We have a $300,000 withdrawal from our tuition reserve because we're a sending district and we send to Collingswood. There's certain reserves that we can set aside in June of every year, kind of like a savings account. Once we close our books in the month of June, we can set aside funds for unanticipated future costs, but only in specific areas. Number one, if you understand a receive relationship, like Oakland is where Collingswood, we can set aside money into tuition, in case there's a large spike in tuition cost. In addition, we can set aside money for a capital project in the capital reserve or a maintenance reserve. So, that brings me to the next two line items. We're withdrawing 102,000 from our maintenance reserve account, and that'll fund the ongoing maintenance of the building. We're withdrawing 15,000 from our capital reserve, and that is going to fund, we're putting railings, I guess on the main floor where Mrs. Bolden's office is, but I caught the ramp, the carpeted ramp. We're going to put railings, safety railings. State aid, 2.9 million, so it's 27.7%. This is on a decline. When I started in Collingswood and Oakland about 17 years ago, I think Collingswood was about 30%, Oakland was hovering about 28, 29%. So, it is on a decline. State aid for the tax levy incentive program, the one-time pot of money that Trenton is kicking in, it's not a lot, but we will be able to buy some items with this, and that's Semi-Medicaid, this is one of these programs that Dr. McDowell was just speaking about. We were mandated by Trenton years ago for all districts to participate in this. So, some of our children that receive specialized, like OTPT and one-to-one nursing services, we get money back for Medicaid. Usually on a good year, $40,000, $45,000, but that's quite a bit of money for a tiny school district like Oakland. I'm told by Trenton to expect $1,600 next year, so it's a sizable reduction. In addition, I believe this is one of the programs that's on the slate for the Fed to cut. They're fighting it right now, so it's possible it's going to go away completely in the coming year. Miscellaneous income of about $6,995 is basically money earned sitting in the bank. And then rentals, we, Oakland rents three classrooms to Collingswood for the Collingswood preschool program. And for those of us, I like pictures, so those of us that want to see it. Surplus accounts are about 3.7% of overall revenue. Maintenance reserve, 1%, tuition, 2.8%, state aid, 27.7%, and 64% coming from local taxes. And this is how we spend our money. And to be honest, I think instruction and student services should be together, but the way Trenton has the DOE budget, it's actually broken into specific categories. Instructions, $8.3 million, or almost 78% of budget. Student services, and these are things like child study team, OTPT, some one-to-one aids, those fall into that category, so I believe they're instruction-worthy as well, but this is how Trenton has us break that out. That's almost 13%. Facilities, 5.8%, and administrative costs, 4%. Oop, sorry about that. And again, just if you like pictures, and then this is what everybody wants to know. So, 2526 tax levy proposed tonight on the agenda, 6,880,970. Average household increase, $31.80 a month, or $381.55 per year.
We have a few district priorities moving into this upcoming year, and so we want to make sure that we improve the alignment of our administrative services. And so, we want to make sure that we're providing additional support where support is needed at the school level. Continue to identify strategies to secure additional school funding. Actively pursue additional revenue streams. And so, one of the things that has grown very apparent to us is that the state is shifting the responsibility more to localities. And so, but there's a threshold that most communities can sustain, and then there is an unsustainable threshold. And so, as a district and as a school, we're going to be focused on identifying philanthropic dollars, institutional levels of support, external resources through partnership to be able to bring in additional revenues to support our students. And then we want to commit to retaining our dedicated staff. And so, our teachers, in honor of Teacher Appreciation Week, our teachers have been doing a yeoman's job over the last several years as we transition students, as we provide for their needs that are growing in degrees of complexity with declining resources. And so, the team here in Oakland has really focused in, they've removed some of the minutia that doesn't have a positive effect on kids, and they're really drilling down on a daily basis and doing the absolute most important things to be able to impact young people. And what we're seeing is students are growing, students are improving, students are thriving. Do we still have areas to improve? Absolutely, all school districts do. But our staff is working incredibly hard, and we want to continue with that progress. Curriculum and instruction. And so, in 1985, those of you that are my age or a couple of years older, we used to carry our books, big, heavy, leather-bound book bags. They don't really sell books anymore. They sell digital resources that they charge you fees, and then they have consumable products that are proprietary. And so, what we're experiencing is trying to figure out ways to navigate, to get students with the resources that they need, but in the most economical way. The standards in ELA and math, they change on an annual basis, and we want to make sure that we're keeping up with pace and that we're providing top-notch resources for our teachers to be able to engage our young people. We will continue implementation of the science of reading. We will also focus on continually improving the quality of teaching and learning, specifically by making sure our teachers have resources, but also focus on our coaching model. Increasing targeted levels of student support, making sure that small group instruction continues to meet the needs. We're also going to be using universal diagnostic screeners so that teachers are looking at the right information for the right students and prescribing the right support at the right time to continue with that growth. And then we also are focused on increasing high-quality early childhood educational seats for all qualifying families in Oakland. Cost-saving measures, and so these are systems that are currently in place. We're continually looking for opportunities to provide service at the most economical cost. And so, external relationship management, actively seeking grants, partnerships, additional resources to bring back into our school. We participate in insurance joint ventures, which lowers the cost of our insurance. And in positive years, we actually receive refunds and dividends, which goes back into supporting our schools. We are in a utilities consortium because we want to be able to pay for energy, water, and sewer at the lowest cost. In addition to belonging to the Ed Services Commission for cooperative purchasing of student supplies and technology. And then, we benefit greatly from the shared service agreement between Oakland and Collingswood, where we share administration, business services, child study team, custodial, maintenance, technology, and safety. And so, there are significant reductions in operational expenses based on that partnership. Trash removal is provided by Oakland Public Works. And then by ensuring that we have high-quality programs, we dramatically decrease the likelihood of students needing to go to private placement out of district. And so, the cost of private placement for the average student is between 70,000 and 120,000 per child. And so, it behooves us to make sure we have high-quality programs here in this building to be able to reduce the likelihood of having to send young people away and outside of the borough. And that concludes our presentation. And board members, we are open for your questions.
Before we get started with questions, there's a brief statement I want to share with the public. As Dr. McDowell outlined, we are in a pivotal moment in our district. We've been provided an opportunity to take control of our financial destiny regardless of changing federal or state mandates. And I really wanted to begin tonight by providing the community a detailed timeline and some crucial clarity on our strategic vision to right-size the budget, highlighting our desires of board to keep the needs of our students and the financial impact of our community at the forefront. As Dr. McDowell mentioned, since 2009, New Jersey's School Funding Formula has faced ongoing criticism for its limitations, particularly with the imposition of a 2% annual tax on tax levy increases. While this was intended to provide taxpayer relief, the cap's proven increasingly ineffective in addressing the actual financial needs of school districts across the state. As we've seen in the news, Oakland is not alone in that. Over time, the constrained revenue growth, coupled with rising costs associated with inflation, contractual obligations, and the increased demands of providing a thorough and efficient education, has led to a growing structural budget deficit or gap in districts across the state. This widening gap between available funding and necessary expenditures has forced difficult A core tenet of effective governance, and one that resonates strongly with the current presidential administration, is the principle of empowering local communities and states to make decisions that best serve their unique needs. Addressing the shortcomings of the current state funding formula aligns perfectly with this philosophy, by enabling our district to exercise greater control over its financial destiny and educational priorities. Its pursuit of additional funding at its heart is about ensuring that our decisions impacting our students are made here at the local level, not by those who understand our community's specific needs the best. I firmly believe that our Board of Education has diligently embraced this responsibility, and in doing so, we have a unique opportunity, one that may not come again, to enhance the educational experience for every Oakland student. Just to provide a clear understanding of the comprehensive process that we've undergone since March 28, about a month ago, which has included five formal meetings, along with countless emails and phone calls, I'd like to walk everyone in the community through some of the key dates and resulting decisions. And I want to once again commend the tireless dedication and urgency that our Board of Education and district administration have displayed in navigating the complexities of this budget this year. March 28, 2025, was when the initial guidance came out from the state of the tax incentive aid program. In short, the guidance gave districts permission to increase the tax base over the 2%, provided we have utilized all current avenues of income, also allowing us to, the state, to kick in a 5% allocation to offset that. Wednesday, April 9, as we scrambled, that was our first public meeting to discuss the funding options. That was a special meeting to apply, not to approve the budget, but just to apply to the state for the program. And at that point in time, the board decided to apply for the full amount. We didn't want to leave any money on the table and want to have as much freedom as possible moving forward to decide the best path. And looking at that, the district administration and Board Finance Committee really honed in on several plans to try to frame our thinking. So, option A would have been to go for the full adequacy funding. That would have been a $750,000 increase to the budget. That would have eliminated the adequacy gap completely and restored all of our programming staff. That would have been an increase of $588 annually, or $49 a month. Option B was a medium funding increase for 550,000, would have pared down what we would be bringing back and would have brought us to a $460 annual tax or $38.25 monthly. And then option C that we discussed was $300,000, which would have only restored two teachers that were cut in previous budget cycles. That would have been $299 annually, or $24.92 monthly. That brought us to April 14, a mere two weeks after the application or after the state sent out their guidance to have that sent out. So, we approved the application for the full amount, sent that off to the state for approval, which we were subsequently approved for. The conversations that we've had went well beyond just the finance committee. You know, we engaged the entire board through our variety committee meetings to have these discussions with district administration, with Ms. Bolden as our building principal. And one of the things that we came to realization with those three options that we kind of outlined originally, just to frame our thinking, was that we were a little off target. The full amount, the 15.44% would have been way too much to ask of the community. Transversally, the 8.23% or option C really just wouldn't give our school the funding it needs. And so, through these ongoing discussions, we really came hit at that $450,000 as that sweet spot where we would minimize the tax burden on the community as much as possible while still ensuring that the needs of the building are met. So, all these conversations took place during the April 15 committee meetings and then during the April 22 finance committee meeting, which we had our own special meeting to kind of dig into this a little bit more deeply. I'd like to thank Mr. Stouts, Ms. Love, Mr. McMillan for engaging those conversations as we had that extra meeting. Which brings us to our Saturday, April 28, last weekend, our meeting, special meeting to revise the application. The state said, we applied for the full amount. If you want to change that, you have to reapply, so we can approve that. And that was due by that Monday, I forget, the 28th. The meeting was the 26th, and that was due the 28th. So, the application that was ultimately sent to the Department of Ed was for the $450,000 increase or a 10.63% adjustment. On a roll call at our Saturday meeting, we had seven for, one against, and one board member not present. That brought us to our April 29 board meeting. That brought us to our April 29th board meeting, which was our regularly scheduled meeting. However, the budget hearing was postponed until we had heard back from the state, which brings us to tonight, May 6th. You know, the purpose for our vote tonight as a board is to approve the budget as a whole, if that's what the board decides. That will be on the 10.63% adjustment, since that is the amount that was approved by the state currently, and send that up. And of course tomorrow, and this is where the timelines really get crazy, the state put to place. Everything is due to the state by tomorrow. So, in the event of a tie, in the event that the budget is not approved, all budgeting decisions will then be turned over to the county superintendent and the Department of Education. Essentially, we would lose control. So, in closing, I'm just reflecting on the great deal of time and effort that each member of the Board of Education has committed for this crucial topic. I want to echo the sentiments that I shared earlier this week with the board and express my appreciation for the hard work and thoughtful consideration that everyone on the board has given to this topic. Our discussions have been incredibly positive and productive. I'm proud to be working with such a dedicated group of community leaders and administrative team. The thoughtful engagement that we've had over this last month has been highly valued, and I don't want us to lose sight of that because it's been a lot of hard work. The collaborative effort has ensured that the entire board is well-informed and ready to move on with tonight's vote, knowing the impact that it will have on our district's future. So, thank you to the board and to the administration for your dedication. And with that, we'll open it up to the board for any questions or comments.
Question, we've been approved for $450,000 approximately. Can we elect to take less than that amount?
You approved for 757, so we elected to take less than the full amount at 450. Yeah, you approved for 757, I believe was the number.
Yes.
And we elected to go for less at 450, so yes, you can go less again.
We could go less again?
Yeah.
Okay. And another question for you. Just out of curiosity, why didn't this not go back through the Finance Committee?
Which part?
The revised budget.
We just had our meeting, I just went through the outline of the dates. Our last Finance Committee meeting, let me just pull up the date here. It was April 22nd, you were there for that.
Yes, I was. But I wasn't there for the decisions that were made with the numbers that are being put in here now.
We made that decision then, and then we voted on Saturday.
We made a decision on the total amount, not the individual items, but that's okay. That's it, I have no other questions.
Okay. My understanding is that in terms of the specificity of the line items, that's not something that's voted on, the amount is voted on, but in terms of what goes into which specific line item is up to the district administration to determine.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
But, we would have input into what's going on there, or we should have some knowledge of what's going in there.
If we can go less and this is due tomorrow, how would we go less?
We'd have to change all the numbers as we sit here tonight. We don't leave until it's done. That's why when they send the guidance out, they said they could change your budget up to and at the public hearing, which is right now.
So, to echo some of Richard's sentiments, I'm, you know, thankful for everyone's hard work here at this table. As a board, I know it's a decision that we've all taken and are taking very seriously. Obviously, the last meeting I was, was the lone no vote as I had just kind of felt a little more comfortable at that option that was a little less. You know, at that point, we did have more viable options. We don't have the greatest options, obviously, as of right now. You know, with a budget presumably passing, it is going to bring, I think, stability to the funding for this district, which I'm very grateful for. But in never kind of feeling really at ease with the option that we pursued, respectful of the decision we made as a board, but always kind of feeling some of the other options that were on the table then, feeling more confident in them, I almost feel a violation of conscience to approve tonight. I appreciate all the work and I am grateful for, I think, stability that's going to be brought to the district in funding, assuming the budget passes. But, in never feeling fully confident and at ease in getting there, I will respectfully be a no vote tonight. I just wanted to be transparent with everyone here and kind of let you know what my thought process was.
First of all, thank you, everybody, for showing up. And I think it's a good thing that people have differing opinions because it gets the conversation going. I think I made it clear at the last meeting I was at that I disagree with some portions of the line items, but overall, that this is going to bring stability and benefit the district. I'm in a unique position where I was here in seventh grade when Oakland transitioned to K to five after being K to nine because of some budget shortfalls. And I don't want us to be in a position like a neighboring district where we see layoffs and we see massive resignations. With that in mind, though, I think that after the vote tonight, that we as a board need to commit to exploring reducing non-student-facing areas. I think that is extremely important, so we do have money set aside. And I also think we need to evaluate changes that have been made in the administration over the past few years, whether that be increases, spending, and see where we can make changes there. Obviously, I don't think there's a win-win scenario for this. People are getting affected and hurt either way. But, again, I may disagree with portions of the line items, but this is still money that's going into our district that's going to protect our teachers for years ahead.
I would just add that I have been so conflicted with this entire thing. I think he said it well, there's no, none of this is ideal. I don't really feel, I guess what Todd said, like inconscious, great about approving this. The one thing that would make me feel worse about it, though, is leaving the state, the county office, to designing our budget. So, I would like to say, and I think this is the plan anyway, so you guys can confirm for me, we're going to hear from our community before we vote, correct? So, maybe, I might change my mind by then, but we'll see. I just want to hear what the, what our Oakland community has to say about it.
I want to add a gentle reminder to the board because I think it's important for us not to have selective amnesia. And so, if you recall, those who were on the board, we had an opportunity two years ago. We let banked cap about almost $200,000 expire. And then, seven months later, we had to start laying off people that we would not have had to lay off if we had exercised our full authority. I'm never an advocate of unnecessary increases in taxation. However, we're dealing with an extremely challenging, uncertain time, and the fewer options that the board has is not good. And so, for example, last week, we had a new family move in, and that child is in out-of-district placement, coming into the district. That is a $75,000 to $80,000 hit to the budget that we already know that was not budgeted for in previous years. And so, we have these rising costs, we have high degrees of uncertainty, and what this opportunity allows the board to do is to provide, to Aiden's point, a continuity and consistency of services to students with minimal disruptions. What happens if we do not have, if the board does not have the flexibility to make said decisions? We do in-year cuts, reductions, and decreases to services to students. And I would just gently remind us is that we've come a long way. Our students are moving in the right direction, our teachers are working incredibly hard, but they need additional support in order to deal with what's coming next. Thank you.
Plainly, what keeps me up at night at this point, because I think we're all in agreement, this is a terribly difficult decision, and we're all feeling the weight of that. What keeps me up at night is the thought of five years from now, 10 years from now, for the Oakland community to say, "Hey, what did that, that board have the chance to do X, Y, and Z in 2025? Why the heck didn't they do it?" And, so, that's something for me personally that keeps me up. I want to do right by the community, not just in the short term and minimizing a tax increase as much as possible, but also in the long term of broadening that tax base so that, you know, down the road, they're saying, "All right, you know, those guys in 2025, they had a tough decision to make, but they did right, they did right by us." So, I think that is really weighing on me as well.
One thing that's weighing on me as well is, well, this is a terribly difficult decision, but I also was present for graduation last year as we said goodbye to two staff. We're an extremely small, wonderful, close-knit community. Two staff members was catastrophic, in my opinion, as a parent, as a community member. And I'm very, and I've also, as a parent, seen the difference that, you know, a year can make without enough people there. So, I think it's hard, when you're a small ship and there's a big wind, it moves you much more than a bigger neighboring district. And I think one of the greatest things about our community is what we have been able to do when we band together. So, I hope that we can continue to go in that direction.
To that point, I was talking with a colleague about referendums, districts' government referendums, and they had said, "Yeah, I've never heard of a district that passed a referendum on the first try." And I very quickly said, "Oakland did, right before the pandemic." You know, and thank goodness we did because we were able to do a lot of these facilities upgrades that we just would not be able to do at this point. But, so again, just bringing it back to the community, stepping up for the school and being willing to support this wonderful, wonderful district that we have. So, you know, kudos to the community for that as well. Any other thoughts or comments from the board? All right, hearing none, can we get a motion to close committee of the whole?
It's removed.
Second.
Out of vote. Wrong favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. At this point, are we doing two public comments then? At this point in time, we will make a motion to go into our first public comment of the night. Board members are reminded to please stand, state your name and address, keep your comments to five minutes or less. If you prefer, you can just leave your name and address, there's a sign-in sheet over on the table there. The purpose of the first public comment section is to discuss items listed on the agenda. Additional more general comments may be made in the second public comment portion of the meeting. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns or complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and/or administrators.
Hello, my name is Kyle Bigdowski, I live in 401 Oakland. Maybe it's just a misstep, but since it's a one-time increase that aren't going above 2% for benefits, it's up to 3.4%. Isn't that part of the increase for this year because benefits cost a lot more? And if so, and it's not really a one-time increase, it's more of a two-time increase. Also, in the section where you said that you're going to be, you're committing to supporting staff, you didn't really say how. You said that students are thriving, but in the only bar graph that we saw, it's kind of a flat line. So, it's not, students aren't really, based on what the data you've shown us, they're not really showing up. It's kind of moving on a half percentage each year. So, I was wondering how are you going to commit to supporting staff? You said that teachers deal with a lot of minutia. How's the district support?
This is Gonsalvez. So, that's the board, 514, you have them. Most of you don't have a clue what I'm asking you. Yes, I want you to decide how much you need to do this. Now, tell me, what I want to assure is that you really do need to do this because I think Board of Education meetings, where they actually asked for normal funding, and over her board members in the hall saying, "We actually have it, but we haven't offered it." For instance, one didn't want to. And we won't put forward what we said, where they said, "We actually have them." But we need to visit the best. So, I would like to offer assurance that we need, especially the students, the mom and the rest of you.
Good evening, my name is Amanda Kane. I live at 116, in the terrace. I've never been to a Board of Education meeting before because, quite frankly, I don't have children. But I'm concerned. I've been raving about so many people for the last five years since I moved in, how much I love this town, how well it's maintained. But again, I don't have the perspective from inside the Board of Education, so I respect every one of the citizens and the challenges you face in this business. Hearing that assumed amount, average per household, is going to be a bit of a burden for me. And I know I'm coming at it from a subjective and personal and potentially selfish perspective. And I guess I would have less of an issue with it if I had the confidence that the increase in the spending would be as diligently allocated as the community works out, the community services that I've seen in the time that I've lived here, which, again, I rave about to people outside of this community. I love this city. So, yeah, I love living here. So, knowing how much the increase is going to...
All right, any other comments? All right, let's, if we do a motion? Motion to close public comments section? No, no new motion. All right, we're closing the public comments section and, yeah, Dr. McAlister shares some thoughts.
Okay. So thank you to our community for your feedback, for your concerns. It takes guts to be able to speak in public, and so thank you for having the courage to speak, to speak the truth about the impact of this. And so one of the, the reoccurring themes was reassurances. And so I just want to make sure that we're being very clear and transparent about how school budgets are determined. And so Oakland, and, and I'm not tooting our own horn, what I'm, I'm doing is, is I'm just reaffirming the decisions that not just this board, but multiple boards have done over the last 10 years. And so when, and you heard Aiden kind of share, Oakland has gone through multiple transitions over the last 10 to 15 years. Some were very much needed and then some were forced. And so from a financial perspective, the Oakland boards, including this one, they have continued to be extremely mindful of the financial impact on the local community. We are operating an extremely lean budget here in Oakland. And so in order to be able to maintain the independence that the community has asked for, that the board appropriately supports and continues to advocate for, there are costs associated with that for small districts. And so one of the things, new districts don't pop up of this size because the cost to operate is, is overwhelming. Due to previous generations, significant investments, and you heard the Riordan family talk about just having a facility of this magnitude, to rebuild a facility like this would be 50 to 60 million dollars to, to build new. And that's, that's being conservative in terms of the cost. And so this is a huge value that it takes resources in order to be able to maintain. And this board has been extremely mindful in making wise and frugal bill decisions that are, that are most beneficial in the most economic way. And so what you're seeing is a tempered and measured discussion among the board. We have some knock-down, drag-out discussions about finances because we know that it truly matters to our community. And so when we think about the tax levy aid and when we think about our current budget, our current budget does not have fluff in it. The majority of our budget goes to staff salaries and benefits. And so just to give you an indication of the increase of benefits is the, the 2% cap really translates to about 0.7% of the total budget. And so we're able to increase in new tax revenue about 0.7, 0.8%. The cost of health care for our employees, which is an earned right, we want to make sure that we're taking care of our staff, is about 10 to 10 and a half percent more than it was last year. And so when we're talking about the rising costs, there are unsustainable costs that we are subject to, and we're doing the best that we can to be mindful of how do we make sure that the young people get what they need? But also, how are we limiting the negative and the disruptive impact of the finances on our community members and our taxpayers? And so some of the additional pieces located in the tax levy in the increase, the largest line item goes to restore the staff members that you heard our vice president talk about. And so last year, Oakland received a $632,000 reduction in state aid, even though we were not slated to see reductions in state aid. We found out on the day that they were released, Oakland and 128 other school districts that were not slated for reductions. And so we had to pivot. We cut a significant amount of funding out of our budget, and that was a decrease in not only staffing, but also student services and support. And so one of the things I think that it's extremely important for us to continue to talk about, from my perspective, growth is always growth. And so whether our young people improve 1% or 100%, I'm going to cheer our kids on because what it took in order to see any level of growth with the circumstances that our young people and our staff are facing is nothing short of remarkable. The young people that are in our buildings, they have a wide range of need, and we expect our teachers to be able to support 20 to 25 children in 20 to 25 different places and do it at 100%. And so our staffing is extremely lean. The two positions that are being asked for would go towards targeted instruction for our students with, with IEPs, for our students who are struggling academically, to make sure that no child is left behind, to make sure that no child is getting short-changed in terms of the academics. Additional areas that are going in are health benefits. The rising cost of health benefits is unsustainable. However, we have a financial responsibility to make sure that we're getting the best quality health care for our dedicated staff year over year. And so that's a cost that we will continue to find ways to be able to get the maximum benefit for the lowest price. Transportation. We have students with learning differences and students with targeted, very specialized needs. Transportation costs increase about 7% more than last year. Keeping in mind, the revenues that we're able to actually increase is about 0.75 to 0.8, transportation by itself increases about 7%. Out-of-district tuition. With the average cost of out-of-district tuition being between 70 and $125,000 per child, this time last year, when we were going through the budget process and, and in full transparency, we had worked out an opportunity to, this board said that it was important, given families were struggling, for us to reduce the tax levy. And so the school and the district administration, we had identified about $105,000 in reductions to lower taxes. That same week, two young people, two families moved in, and out-of-district tuition was $99,600. And so it completely absorbed that cost. And so when we talk about the struggle, I mean, what you're seeing on this dais is you're seeing board members that have been wrestling with very challenging circumstances, and we're not all on the same page, and that is okay. They do not lose their independent judgment or voting with their conscience or their faith to be on this dais. And so I, I just wanted to, to kind of put out there that the assurances that folks are asking for, I wish I was psychic. We can give no assurances. What we are experiencing from Washington DC is unprecedented. The level of chaos, dysfunction, and disruption is unlike anything that we've ever seen. Every single day, we're getting new information that potentially, and sometimes definitively, negatively impacts our local community, and we are pivoting, making adjustments as best we can. We are trying to limit the weight of that burden on our communities by not sharing every crazy thing that comes from Washington DC. But there are some challenging things that are coming from Washington DC and coming from Trenton that we have to respond to. And what we have been encouraging, strongly encouraging our board is to have the flexibility to make the decisions so that decisions are not made for them. And so I would just, as we're thinking and as we're contemplating and, and still having discussions and gaining feedback from our community, for us just to be mindful of the environment in which we operate and that if we limit the amount of flexibility now, the decision will no longer be yours in the near, near future. Thank you.
Moving on to item four, Finance and Buildings and Ground Committee. I'm not going to read the whole resolution, unless you want me to?
No, we read it last night in Collinswood, and no, you don't have to read the whole thing, but I just note that this resolution looks different than ones in years past if you went back and looked at our old minutes because Trenton required with us participating in this program, we identify the account numbers of the revenues going into and the, in the expense account numbers that we are increasing with the use of the funds. And I had to add some more wherances and therefore there are outs and all that other stuff in there. But, um, yeah, so that meets the requirements for Trenton.
All right, so we're looking to approve item 4.01. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion and second. Any comments or questions from the board?
I just want to emphasize again after this vote, I'm extremely committed to exploring ways that we can reduce non-student-facing areas and evaluating our administrative costs and how we can make changes there, and I hope that the rest of the board agrees.
I, I agree with you, and I think in addition to that, we have to have a real emphasis on sustainability. As our neighbors pointed out, this is a hot destination for new families, and with that can come new children who also need out-of-district placements. So if we have three move-in within the next year, how do we sustain that? What does that look like? So I think more so than just thinking about, we have to obviously get out of the situation that we're in now, but we, we really have to focus on making this something that can be sustained long-term.
All right, out of all call.
Mr. DeMarco.
Yes.
Mrs. Papel.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian.
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
No.
Mr. Stotts.
Yes.
Mr. Tabey.
Yes.
And motion passes.
I can, you're here with it? Okay, all right.
Moving on to item five, Curriculum and Personnel Committee. Mr. Schaefer.
All right, so just one item on the agenda for tonight. Assuming this computer is a little slow right now, I'm waiting for it to get down there. I can just use the hard copy in front of me, can't I? There we go. So we're looking to approve a couple substitute secretaries for the remainder of the 24, 25 school year. The two secretaries are listed there for you, so we're just seeking approval on item 5.01.
So move. Second. All right, move that seconded. Any comments or questions?
The heading says secretaries, but the section says substitutes and tutors.
That's the standard.
Oh, thank you. I'm a second. How many do we need? Lyle is doing a great job.
Our call. Mr. DeMarco.
Yes.
Sorry. Somebody's got to turn their mic off. Just yell. Mrs. Papel.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian.
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian.
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo.
Yes.